All right, testing, testing. Good morning. On Ms. Gloria's 13th, Friday 13th of last month of December 2024. We're good? Okay. Let's get rolling. I think today is going to be a nice, quick meeting, but call to order and then roll call. Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Akiri.
Here.
Commissioner Baczko is here. Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Conkle.
It is like three days. It is like getting, it is prepped for a flight, long flight, isn't it?
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Presenting.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Vice Chair Escalante.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Appreciate it. Now to virtual meeting procedures. Chris and Simone, good morning.
Good morning. This coastal commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at calspan.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the Calspan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage for, webpage, paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submissions are available on the commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments. We might need to start over. Sorry, guys.
Oh, good. You know what? That's okay. I think I can do the date better, so let's do this again. Good morning. Great, sorry for those delays, but thanks to our team getting us, getting us up and going. Roll call. Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Akiri.
Here.
Commissioner Baczko. Commissioner Cummings.
Here.
Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Conkle.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Nadoff.
Here.
Commissioner Rice.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Presenting.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aqui.
Vice Chair Escalante.
Here.
You have a call.
And I did forget the date, December 13th, 2024. Virtual meeting procedures. Simone, please. Thank you.
Yes. Good morning. This coastal commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at calspan.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the Calspan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless mittels are available on the commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission's agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public, public speaking during general public comments may be given up to two minutes at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment fair will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. of each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of, did I say that already? Sorry. We will, we will accept a request to speak on an item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have, if you have, if you have access to the Internet, please go to the commission webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access, I prefer to testify by phone. Please call the commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Madam Chair, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thanks, Simone. Bringing it back to staff, our chief counsel, we have some closed session to report from yesterday.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Escalante. The commission met in closed session at the end of the meeting yesterday, and it received litigation information and advice and took action on a matter of potential litigation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Now to Mr. Shing for agenda changes or who's going to do?
Now Cassidy Toefel will be doing agenda changes. He's online today.
Great. Hi, Cassidy. Please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Chair Escalante and commissioners. We have seven changes to the agenda today that are noted in the agenda changes memo posted to our online agenda. And I also note that we had a revision to the agenda changes memo that was posted this morning to correct one of the item numbers. So going through the changes, first, we have combined item 8A, 9B, and that's been moved to consent for a CDP application and consistency certification by Subcom and Virofiber Networks in Los Angeles County. Next, combined item 9A, 12C has been postponed for a, for a CDP application and consistency determination for the Centerville Slough Restoration Project in Humboldt County. Next, item 11A has been moved to consent for a time extension of a City of Trinidad LCP amendment. Next, item 12A has been moved to consent. This is a CDP application for modifications to a PG&E substation in Arcata. Next, item 12B has been moved to consent for a CDP application by Caltrans for drainage improvements along Highway 101 in Humboldt County. And finally, item 13A has been moved to consent for the City of Eureka Flood Reduction Projects. This concludes, concludes the changes to today's agenda, and that brings us to item four, general public comment. That'll turn the mic back over to you, Vice Chair Escalante.
Thank you, Mr. Toefel. And Chris and Simone, how many speakers again do we have?
We have eight attendees, 16 Zooms, so total 24 for general public comments.
Okay. Well, you know, today's is definitely going to be a very short meeting, so we'll, we'll give folks two minutes and, you know, remembering that it's Friday, so keep it juicy and efficient. Let's go.
So for members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when is your turn to, when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comments in order to allow for live videos, testimony on Zoom. We will be bringing you in as a panelist. As we will, as we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment to speed up this process. We will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we, until we ask you to speak. After your time is done, you will be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your name, name in the order that, that they, that they appear on our sign-up list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise hand function that will help, help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star six. Please remember to state your name for the record. So first up, we will have Susan Jordan, Wade, Wade Womack, and Adam Leverens. Please go ahead and come up.
Can you pull up my presentation? Here we go. Susan Jordan, Executive Director of the California Coastal Protection Network. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the California Coastal Records Project. We have some exciting news about that. If you're not familiar with it, it's a complete aerial photographic survey of the California coast. We started this in, when I say we, actually, I'll tell you who started this, but in 2002. Can you, next slide, please? So as I said, it's an aerial photographic survey. It covers the entire coast except for the restricted airspace over Vandenberg. Founded in 2002, it was created and is entirely self-funded by Kenneth and Gabrielle Adelman. We make all the photos, I handle the permissions, and we make all the photos available free of charge for nonprofit uses. And your staff has used them, as have many state, federal agencies, scientific institutions, researchers. Just last night, as I was doing this, I got a request for use of the photos. Next slide. Now, this is the couple who conceived of this project and carried it out. It's Kenneth and Gabrielle Adelman. They live in, outside of Santa Cruz. I put a picture from 2002, and note, they have brown hair. And in 2024, notice, they have a lot more gray, and I went from brown to white. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a family affair. That's them flying, they fly the helicopter, Ken leans out the door and takes the pictures. Now the, the technology allows them to do it in a much faster time, higher speed rates. But, okay, next slide. So this is exciting news because they did partial updates. Sometimes they did complete updates, but they hadn't done a full update since 2014. And they conducted it between September 23rd and October 23rd. And this is kind of a big deal because what they have to do is literally take a month, can I just finish this? Literally a month of their life to see when they can fly. Fog, can't fly. You know, weather, can't fly. We got permits from NOAA to cover the areas in the sanctuary, and let me tell you, that's no mean feat. You think it's tough here? You have no idea what, what you have to do for that. And there are about, over, close to 4,000 photos were taken in the permitted sanctuary areas. Next slide, please. Oh, is that the, no, there's another one, isn't there? Yes. Oh, yes, that's, that's a picture of where you're sitting right now. Where those buildings are. But you should go on the website. Next slide, please. And that's the website link, obviously. I handle all the permissions, so, and I've been doing that for over 20 years. And we do require, we don't charge anything for that, but we do require that the photos be accompanied by their copyright. And so enjoy. And I should say that the, one of the reasons that this 2024 update got done was because Lisa Hagie called me and said, you know, people are really hoping that the Adelman's are going to do another, you know, full survey because it's a comparison. It's a baseline from 2002. And so I called them up and they agreed to do it. I also want to thank the Resources Legacy Fund because they were very helpful when we were going to NOAA and going to the sanctuaries to get the aerial permits. So those are the two people I want to thank, and have fun.
Thanks, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. Next is Wade Womack, followed by Adam Leverens, followed by Jesse Fleming, followed by Mike Fleming. Please come up.
I have a slide.
Please pull the mic closer to you.
Happy Friday, commissioners. Wade Womack, coastal access advocate. Yesterday, a speaker spoke to, in regards to the lack of access to this new public dock. It's right there in the foreground. In the background are the new commercial slips that, the idea was the commercial marina can encroach into the channel as long as the public got a great public dock. Next slide, please. Here's the aerial, A on the left, public dock. C on the far, far right is the nearest public parking. Next slide, please. There's the private property, no public parking, Willtoe. Wouldn't it be awesome if we could get a drop-off okay sign added to that? That would be fantastic, so people could drop off. On the right is the restrictive signage and no fishing. Next slide, please. Here's some kids with their bikes, no bike rack, and they're out there fishing, fishing the pier. Next slide, please. On the left is the commercial marina has a couple slips in this area on the public dock, and they're actually encroaching. It's kind of becoming, from what I could tell, overflow for the commercial marina and a little less of a public dock. On the right, the County of Orange Board of Supervisors added a special condition that an ADA boating lift be made available for the disabled and those with mobility problems. Unfortunately, there's no ADA parking spot at the location at all. Next slide, please. Here's some ideas to improve things. Let's create a public vehicle drop-off. That's not a big ask for the Irvine Company. Secondly, let's get an ADA parking stall at the base of the public pier. Next, let's add a bike rack for those kids. Let the kids fish. Let's pull down that no fishing sign and let the boys fish. It's presumptive right per the California Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Leverens, Jesse Fleming, followed by Mike Fleming.
If I could, I'd like to use Mr. Womack's first slide. Again, Adam Leverens, I have been speaking before you since April in Long Beach. This is the first time I've had opportunity to come to three days of meetings due to proximity. I was already greatly appreciated of staff and commissioners, and after the marathon meeting on Monday and yesterday, and then thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do and all the listening, and 47 public speakers, 51 public speakers on some items. It has to be somewhat exhausting. As, as far as what Mr. Womack just talked about, behind there, those are marina slips. I think you know by now what marina slips cost in Newport Beach. This is tens of thousands of dollars of revenue for the Irvine Company. And they encroach into the waterway, the channel that goes under PCH, and we were assured that this would be mitigated by the public dock. But there is no public parking at the public dock. There are no public restrooms at the public dock. Children can't fish at the public dock. They can't lock up their bikes at the public dock. And, and Mr. Womack suggested some improvements. I would encourage that maybe some parking spaces be designated for dock use. And I have friends that live close to here. It would be nice to me to be able to kayak over and spend the night at my friend's house or walk to the grocery store from the dock or walk and have a meal from the dock. But there's a three-hour time limit at the whole dock. So that precludes most avid boaters from using this dock. The people, it generally seems to be designed for people with the electric Duffy boats to come have dinner and go home. And, and this seems like more tailored to exclusive use, and, and you've been hearing this for months from a number of us, but, but it just is not fair. And we hope for some improvements and that a public dock can be more for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Jesse Fleming.
Good morning. My name is Jesse Fleming. I live aboard a boat with a permit in Newport Beach. I've spoken to you in the past, but I wanted to come and personally thank you all for listening to us. We've been under such stress for the last year and a half. We've done countless meetings with the city, with the state. We've reached out to the media. We've even pursued lawyers to help us. We feel like the little Who'sville down there saying, we are here, we are here, we are here. And you guys are the Horton who heard the Who. And I just thank you three times over that somebody finally listened and that you've helped the state get involved. So we're finally able to take a sigh of relief, but we know that the storm is still coming. And we are preparing as liveaboard to be ready for whatever the city has. You see, what the city wants in the way is that they will try to price us all out or they will not allow liveaboard permits for future generations. The last deal that the city made with us was we could stay, those who have the liveaboard permit, but future generations, they will not assign any liveaboard permits. We are the last of the Mohicans. I'm here today to beg you to please allow liveaboard permits continue for the future generations. Forty years ago, I married my husband and said, I do, I will live on a boat and I'll sail around the world with you. We've had countless adventures. We raised three children along the way, and we now have a nonprofit organization called Forgiving Vessels. We help boaters to connect wherever they bring their vessels to help. We call it Cruising With A Purpose. Yet, in order to do that, as boaters, need a place that we can call home. Not only do we encourage making a difference in the world, but we help in our community as well. We could tell countless stories of how liveaboard have helped with safety and rescues. The point is, we are here. We are a community, and we need your help to preserve it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Up next is Mike Flemings.
Isn't she great? I had a winner. So access to the mooring field. There's maybe 800 moorings out there, and the public docks provide, in our area, maybe there's 400 between Lido Island and the peninsula, and there's, there's 60 cleats. So you can tie your boat up with one end if 60 of us could get in there. It's, the access is really, really hard. You have to, if you're going to leave your boat for more than three hours, I have, I have another two hours to get back and move my boat. I'm in the three hour. She's got the nine-foot boat, so she's in the 24 hours. She's, she's safe for the day. There are two beaches on either end of the peninsula, big public beaches like Mom Beach, where you can take the little kids in, there's no waves, and there's a rope to keep boats out of the swimming area. Would be just an absolutely fabulous place to put a dock for the many, many moorings that are right there, 100 yards offshore, there's moorings, but you've got to go down 15, 20 streets to get to the public dock that is overwhelmed every single day. The, the boats that are on the inside are dry on ground twice a day. So if you come back at low tide, you've got to drag your boat through the mud to get out or just get a ride from somebody else. So with all of the increased rates, you would hope that the city would try to make things better, to actually have access to those 800 moorings, because there is not access to those moorings. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next is Steve Ray, Anna Christensen, and Ray Hemshir. Please come on up.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, commissioners and staff. My name is Steve Ray, or as the chair has called me now, Moro Ray, and I'm here to take us further up the state to Moro Bay. So I want to talk about the battery plant that is being proposed up in Moro Bay. It is before the city at this point, has been for about a year and a half. They've completed the EIR. City has announced it's going to take another year and a half to complete the process. But Vistra, the company, has announced that they are, they've asked the city to put the project on hold, and instead they are going to go to the California Energy Commission under the auspices of Assembly Bill 205 to process it there. Under AB 205, the Energy Commission has to resolve this entire issue, including doing a new EIR and everything, within 270 days. That's nine months. That's nearly impossible to do an EIR. EIRs generally take over a year anyway, just to complete. They have 270 days to do the entire process. And then, under AB 205, it would then come to the coastal commission, and the coastal commission will have 90 days to process this application. This is an absolutely ridiculous requirement under AB 205. You have to get extensions just for simple LCP amendments and things like that, because you can't do those in 90 days. A large, complex project like this, you can't do in 90 days. So I would guess that this, both AB 205 and the actions of the Energy Commission and the coastal commission may be challengeable and may be part of our future when considering this project. So things are progressing, but not well with this project. I just wanted to keep you updated as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Anna Christensen and Ray Hemshir.
Good morning. Thanks for fighting SpaceX. We really appreciate it. Ray, before the clock starts, Ray won't, we were told he could cede his time, but now we're told he can't. If he can't, then Anne Cantrell will follow me online to get this report done. I'm here from the Los Ritos Wetlands Task Force of Sierra Club. Los Ritos Wetlands Task Force was on Fuel Dock Road during the 2024 Big Bang Fireworks Show. One monitor reported that some minutes into the fireworks, I saw a great blue heron fall into the water. I watched it swim towards where I was standing and started videoing when it tried to climb the seawall to get out of the water. But it stopped just as I started the video and continued swimming along the seawall, around the corner, and later managed to get on the dock and stayed there, not moving any further. Can we see the video, please? This is the video that he took that night. There's the, there's the great blue heron. It's a juvenile. It has already tried to climb this seawall. It has fallen over 30 feet from its nest as the fireworks were exploding. Okay, I'll continue. Although the 2024 Big Bang event was on September 1st, near the end of nesting season, there were active nests within the project impact zone, mainly on Fuel Dock Road. Chicks and juveniles were still being fed by adults, testing their wings by jumping between branches. The fireworks would put them at risk of falling, jumping, or being pushed from nest or being abandoned and exposed to predators, cold, and hunger. As the events, airplane flyovers and hang gliders invaded their airspace, normal foraging and flight activity ended. When the fireworks began, 20-plus birds flushed, and one great blue heron juvenile, about that one, fell 30-plus feet from its nest into a marina channel below. After swimming 200 feet around the seawall at a park, it pulled itself onto a low dock float. Observing that it was soaking wet and could suffer from exposure, we contacted the City of Long Beach IBR naturalist, who advised that the juvenile was at risk and should be brought in for observation. However, given the bird's location and our limited ability, we did not attempt to rescue. And, and may I have the extra minutes, the two minutes?
Miss, I think, Ms. Cantrell is in, is on Zoom?
Yeah.
We'd like to hear from her, too.
Okay. She's just going to finish reading this.
She can finish. Yes. Thank you, Ms. Christensen.
Okay, so Ray Hemshir. Anne Cantrell on Zoom, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Yes. Good morning, Anne Cantrell. And I will continue telling you about this poor bird. After a failed attempt to fly up to a railing around the park, a sure sign, it was unable to return to its nest. The juvenile remained on the dock until observers left around 1:00 a.m. The next day, the juvenile was no longer found on the float or dock, so its fate is unknown. Because of the fireworks, normal avian behavior was disrupted. Birds flushed, and one juvenile great blue heron fell from its nest, suffering trauma and possibly worse. We request that no more fireworks shows be permitted in Alameda's Bay due to the negative impacts to coastal birds, marine life, water, and air quality. And as you know, PI environmentalist avian monitoring report disregards and fails to report the multiple signs of disruption to nesting as a result of the fireworks. In fact, they reported that, quote, "The biologist noticed a young great blue heron come out of the fourth tree and landing in the water." fourth tree and landing in the water." The heron lifted itself unaided out of the water onto a temporary dock. There's no mention of it having to swim. And by the way, herons are wading birds, not swimming birds. They do not have webbed feet. They don't have oiled feathers to be in the water. The bird sat there quietly, evidently laying down comfortably for the remainder of the fireworks show. It was not shivering from having been in the water, and did not flinch from the sounds of fireworks, nor did it display any sort of discomfort. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Cantrell.
Thank you. Up next will be Penny Alea. I'm going to promote you to panelists. You should be able to speak, Penny.
Good morning. This is Penny Alea.
Good morning. We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. During my recent conversations with federal consistency, it seems they feel they have a mandate to move forward plans for a combined consistency determination and CDP for the Centerville Slough Project in Humboldt County in February 2025. Please allow me to share some history, concerns, and questions about this proposal. Next slide, please. Decades of coastal act violations by landowners and managers remain unaddressed and unresolved. A handful of these violations are outlined in the August 2024 staff report, but many more are under investigation by enforcement. Next slide. Violation 1 in the staff report is an unpermitted dyke seawall, one and a half miles long. One mile has an expired emergency CDP, which constitutes a violation. Next slide. The other half-mile broadly described in violation 3 has never been permitted. Next slide. Violation 2 is an unpermitted dam. Just want you to focus on that one for a bit. Next slide. Violation 3 also includes multiple unpermitted drainage ditches that serve to drain wetlands. Next slide. Many questions about this project remain unanswered, but perhaps one of the biggest questions focuses on tribal consultation and what that will consist of. Equity appears to be lacking, if not totally absent. Why is this project that is so similar in many aspects to the Commission Enforcement's recent reservation ranch case being handled in a completely different manner? Is NRCS a partner that can be trusted to carry out this project given their past history of partnership failures? And why is NRCS rushing federal consistency to a hearing in February? Is this project even close to being consistent with the coastal act? Please take all the time needed and warranted to address this project for the benefit of our finite, finite natural resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Penny. Next is Harry Fawcett, Scott Greeson, and Mark Ranyack. Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Harry Fawcett, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name's Harry Fawcett. I live in Avila Beach. I'll go quick. I have, I just have questions. So the mission of you guys is protected and enhancing the California coast. So does industrializing the ocean with complex towers with multiple moving parts up to 1,100 feet tall, and this one's in China, with a sweep of 812,000 square feet? This is the largest model to date. The nacelle, the hub, is on top of these where the equipment is, is as large as a house. So I'm thinking of these off of the central coast, and I don't see them as wind farms. I just see them as industrial towers. Okay, so my questions. Have any or all of you visited an offshore site, say, the North Sea off of UK, or China, or New Jersey? And if you did do this, did you drift silently and listen and sit under any of these turbines and hear the swoosh, feel the vibrations? Have any of you Commissioners visited a wind turbine manufacturing facility? And the reason you need to go there is, these are complex machines, and complex machines break down. You know, they tell you that a wind turbine can last 20 or 30 years. And I've been looking at this for a long time, basically from the Pacific Northwest and ones on land, but they break down. So when you're in the harshest climate of the ocean, these moving parts, you need to see, if you permit this, what you're allowing to be out there. You know, there's hydraulics, there's electric, electric components, generators, drive shafts, gears, the blades themselves. It's a big, heavy machine that wears out. Anyone, has anyone gone to the sea and watched them build these? How they bore into the ground? No. But anyway, so my questions are just, if you're going to permit something, understand what you're permitting, and you need to see it for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Next, we have Scott Greeson, followed by Mark Ranyack, followed by Janet Rogers. Scott, please unmute yourself, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Scott Greeson. I speak on behalf of Friends of the Isle River, where I serve as Conservation Director, about the proposed Rust Creek Centerville Slough Project postponed from today's agenda. In brief, the Natural Resources Conservation Service is seeking a consistency determination for a project that is not consistent with the coastal act. The project area consists, to a large extent, of current or historic tidelands subject to the public trust. The cut-off slough tide gate, largest on the West Coast, was clearly constructed to isolate public trust tidelands for private agricultural use. Although the State Lands Commission has yet to determine the extent of the tidelands for which NRCS applied for lease in this spring, NRCS has refused to delay or withdraw its CD. Many project activities are not consistent with public trust uses allowed on such tidelands, nor does the project ensure it will provide public access. The project seeks to dredge and fill wetlands and disturb sensitive habitats. Your staff report rightly emphasizes that while filling wetlands for restoration purposes is allowable, doing so to reclaim lands for agricultural uses is not. As the report shows, the majority of the project's wetland dredge and fill, particularly the 700,000 cubic yards of fill associated with constructing the proposed setback berm, quote, "would be in service of reclamation activities" and thus inconsistent with the coastal act. Indeed, it's not clear the project is properly described as a self-sustaining restoration project. NRCS expects the project would require extensive and ongoing maintenance and manipulation, including up to 100,000 yards of annual dredging. Although it's not clear that maintenance, how that maintenance would be funded, it is apparent such maintenance dredging would conflict with CCMP Section 3230's mandate that the biological productivity of those waters be sustained. We urge the Commission to hold consideration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next will be Mark, Janet, and Lydia. Mark, go ahead and speak.
Okay, am I, am I on?
Mark Ranyack.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Ranyack. I am a member of the San Diego Embarcadero Coalition. I strongly urge the Coastal Commission to reject San Diego Port's PMPU because it, because it is grossly misleading and incomplete. It deceptively states that the Central Embarcadero will remain as-is while the port simultaneously plans the 2.7 million square foot Seaport San Diego project with clearly foreseeable major environmental impacts. Seaport San Diego must be included in a legally compliant PMPU. Some examples of huge environmental impacts from Seaport San Diego. It will add over 47,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent every year of operation compared to the as-is PMPU complaint, which is equal to adding over 10,000 new cars to our road every single year for the next 40 or more years. This is clearly significant environmental harm. Seaport San Diego's added yearly CO2 equivalent wipes out almost half the Port of San Diego's Climate Action Plan targeted annual reductions. The port has zero plans in the PMPU to make up for this loss of greenhouse gas reductions. Seaport San Diego water pollution risk for the bay will increase up to four times greater than the PMPU as-is conditions due to stormwater runoff and other sources. Based on numerous reliable scientific studies, this scale of bayside overdevelopment will pollute coastal waters with heavy metals, hydrocarbons, bacteria, viruses, trash harmless, harmful to marine life and sewage. To fully evaluate critical environmental impacts of the Central Embarcadero redevelopment, it must be combined with the PMPU environmental impacts. As it stands, the Commission should reject the PMPU due to missing required information and unavoidable negative environmental impacts inherent in Seaport project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Up next is Janet Rogers, followed by Lydia Ponse, followed by Leslie Kashiwata.
Hello, I have a slideshow.
Yes, it's coming up. Give us one second, please.
I'm Janet Rogers, co-chair of the Embarcadero Coalition in San Diego. Next slide. The Port Master Plan is not the 42nd Amendment to the master plan. You can't approve a plan that leaves 46% of the land and water without a governing document and doesn't tell the truth about the Central Embarcadero. Next slide. The noise pollution affects health by damaging cardiovascular systems and causing hearing loss and sleep disturbances. The threshold for harm to humans is 55 decibels. Next slide. The left table shows where noise levels double. The port doubles the power of noise at a 3-decibel increase. A 10-decibel increase doubles the loudness for people, going from 55 decibels, the threshold of doing harm, to 65, doubles the volume people experience and inflicts more harm. We exceed the recommended average noise levels of 53 decibels for a full day and 45 for overnight. Next slide. The noise pollution study was biased. Readings weren't taken on Pacific Highway and not at night. The EIR noise levels are significant and unavoidable. The port ignored mitigation due to the overriding consideration of making money. Next slide. The traffic study evaluated existing traffic noise and found excessive noise levels for residents and hotel guests already. Instead of reducing noise levels, the port plans to allow an increase of 3 decibels per project. The Embarcadero noise levels are already above 60 decibels, and several readings are above 70. Pacific Highway across from the Wyndham Hotel is already over 65. Next slide. Please reject the San Diego PMPU. It's missing 46% of the port's managed land and water. Please don't harm people by allowing noise levels to increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next, we have Lydia Ponse, followed by Leslie Kashiwata, followed by Marcy Snyder, and then Diana Sandoval.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. Thank you. I call with a heart full of gratitude and being felt like we were seen and heard last Wednesday. But I speak a little bit with a heavy heart about the language that has taken over the landscape of just social justice and racial equality, equity, and any kind of reparation. It's the language of yimby-nimby. It further divides, and it is toxic, and it is withholding and supporting anything white, power supreme. And I say these things because, you know, we didn't fall in line with some of our community, who we deem friends and neighbors. We didn't fall in line, and it was, to me, it appears that we were falsely told that there's an allyship there because of some of the things that were said. For example, I never knew that were so many Venetians that are in right relations with indigenous people in the four directions or any one direction. And it's a critique because, you know, we're still celebrating many holidays that were actually days of mourning for indigenous people. And the allyship and the accomplice part of the relationship that we can have for the future, especially 2025 and the project coming at us, all, including the environment, has to do with the work that our non-indigenous people have to do. And it's something that it's too heavy for us to lift, and it's a burden of finding those isms, those comfortable isms, and undoing them. And it's basically, essentially decolonizing. I thank Kli Banali for doing a lot of the work of the Denai Nation. And basically, I'm here to also say that all of these discomforts isn't meant to hurt. It's to say that we can be better relatives. We can always do better. We're not doing it wrong, but we can always do it better. Because the Venice community, the character of the Venice community is not white money only. It is not white only. And if you please look up allyship with indigenous black and brown relatives, and you will also find how to step up and be an accomplice. And I encourage everyone for the unity and for the sake of healing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ponse. Thank you, Leah. Next is Leslie Kashiwata, followed by Marcy Snyder, followed by Diana Sandoval. Ms. Leslie, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, Honorable Coastal Commission Staff, Coastal Commissioners Staff and Public. My name is Leslie Kashiwata. I'm a resident of Fort Bragg, and I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about the former mill site. I sent a letter on December 7th, so there's more information there. So this is just for context. This is what the site looked like in 1987. It's an active industrial zone. It took many years to decommission after it was closed in 2002. And the last area of cleanup is Operational Unit E, or OUE, which you see in that lower image with the yellow square around it. Next slide, please. This is the current status of OUE. There's a coastal trail that goes around the fenced area with ponds that have not been all remediated, particularly Pond 7 and Pond 8. The landowner has proposed seven alternatives for remediation. Six require armoring and retain the beach berm. One has the potential to remove the beach berm, but it's not an essential part of that alternative. None address remediation of the low-lying area, and none mention managed retreat. Next slide, please. This just shows the beach berm at high tide, so this is looking south. And the high tide reaches the base of the beach berm. Next slide, please. When we have king tides, they overtop the beach berm. That beach berm is not very stable. Next slide, please. This shows low tide. There's a beach, which is not accessible to the public. I'm standing behind the fence that closes that off. Next slide, please. The current, this was a very recent slide taken at a high tide, so the beach berm continues to crumble. Next slide, please. I want to thank you for participating in the process of working with the landowner and the city. I urge you to continue to advocate for public access. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Marcy Snyder, followed by Diana Sandoval, followed by Betty Wenzel. Marcy, you can please unmute yourself.
Good morning, Commissioners, Staff, and the public. My name is Marcy Snyder. I live in Fort Bragg. And I want to thank Leslie, Dr. Kashiwata, for her presentation, because it's just, so many of us here in Fort Bragg are so deeply concerned about what's happening out at that old mill site, the Noyal Headlands. I am here representing the Grassroots Institute today, and we are approximately 700 strong. We live in a small coastal town. Fort Bragg has just over 7,000 people. And I'm here to thank you on behalf of GRI and many others who live in and around Fort Bragg, as well as surrounding communities and the visitors, because we are a tourist attraction. We thank you for your continued support of our small coastal town, of the city of Fort Bragg, of the residents, of all of us, of all the people, of the environment offshore and onshore. And we want to wish you all a happy holiday season, and I look forward to the coming year. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Snyder. Thanks, Ms. Snyder. Thank you. Next is Diana Sandoval, followed by Betty Wenzholtz, followed by Brian Rosen. Diana, if you can please unmute yourself.
Hi. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Diana Sandoval, and this is the third time I've come before you to raise concerns about what's happening at 3215 Foothill Road, Carpenteria, in Santa Barbara County. Let's start with this first photo. This public trail is blocked. Slide, please. This trail, which should be accessible to the public, has been blocked for years. Despite this clear violation, Santa Barbara County has known for at least six months, and there is no active enforcement action against the property owner, despite the commission's involvement. It feels like there's a different set of rules if you own a private polo field. Slide, please. To recap, this property has a history of coastal act violations in addition to blocking the public trail. This includes the unpermitted development of a third access road and a new bridge over 200 square feet in an environmentally sensitive habitat area and a stream. Now, let's look at this image. Here you can see two men pouring concrete directly along the stream and building an unpermitted fence in an escha. Let me make this absolutely clear. This is happening on 3215 Foothill Road, not my property. To repeat, the concrete pouring, the unpermitted fence construction, and the additional work done on November 18, 2024, in the escha are entirely on 3215 Foothill Road and within the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction. Unfortunately, Santa Barbara County is attempting to weaponize enforcement and threatening me with daily fines by falsely alleging that the work on November 18, 2024 occurred on my property. This is false. I have videos documenting the work on 3215 Foothill Road, which are available for the commission enforcement staff to review, as this is in the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction. Additionally, the county is refusing to open the complaint against the actual offender, further highlighting their bias. This kind of retaliation is alarming. It underpins the integrity of the regulatory process and sends a dangerous message to those who stand up for environmental justice, public rights, and their own property. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana Sandoval. Next is Ms. Betty Wenzholtz, Brian, followed by Brian Rosen, followed by Lorna Moffett.
Yes, thank you. This is Betty Wenzholtz. And I want to refer back to the director's report on your goals for 2025. And one of them stated this: Progress on offshore wind, including engagement with leases and stakeholders on surveys and project development. Interagency work on these, including fishing, environmental monitoring, adaptive management framework, and engagement with the tribes and other undeserved communities, unquote. I want to express my concern regarding this priority that you have continued since 2020 for two reasons. One, there is new data coming out weekly, even from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOAM, regarding harm to marine mammals due to the preparation, installation, and running of these giant turbines. And two, there's a change in the federal administration, therefore a lack of consistent flow of money to make offshore wind turbines affordable. So what I'm hoping is that the commission is going to be flexible and recognize the realities of today, not from 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Rosen, followed by Lorna Moffett.
Hi, Brian Rosen here. I just want to ask you if the Coastal Commission can admit if it's made a mistake. Politicians seldom do. The Coastal Commission has made a huge mistake in regard to the surf project in which it recently approved in Monterey County, which will cause substantial and unnecessary impact to the second most important dune complex in California. Chair Hart, you stated it took an hour to drive to the meeting in Monterey. The busway only bypasses a few miles of traffic, so it will still take an hour. You're still going to be stuck in all that traffic. I don't think you understood the project. I don't think any of you did, except Dana, maybe. Equity was used as a wedge to approve the project. Well, there already is perfect access to the beach from the Salinas Valley. This was, equity is misused. This was mischaracterized. Only two hours of traffic had slowed down in one direction during morning rush hour. You just didn't get it. I hate it when these concepts like equity and environmental justice are used to serve developers. Chair Hart, you bemoaned people contacting coastal commissioners, or stating you were like judges, not to be bothered, but politicians spent countless operations, countless hours in getting your attention. This is wrong. And, you know, this project is all about development. I've heard that, you know, maybe the governor is behind it because they want to do major development in Fordor. It makes no sense to, now it's $105 million. It makes no sense to spend that much money to bypass a few miles of traffic. But a major transit line allows unlimited density and lots and lots of development. And so I think that's why all the politicians are behind it, because otherwise, why destroy the sand dunes? These agencies have just become window dressing for the most part. I mean, I appreciate your doing, your work on access. It is very corrupt and terrible in Santa Barbara County. I know that. But, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Lorna Moffett. Lorna, if you can unmute yourself.
Hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. In Monterey County, we're cutting down thousands of trees. And one large tree provides 260 pounds of oxygen a year and absorbs one ton of CO2 a year and other car pollutants that are now a known cause of Alzheimer's and dementia in all of us and our children. What I'm very concerned about is here in Monterey County, by you okaying the surf project, you're laying down five miles of asphalt, which can heat up to 140 degrees in hot weather. And we have acidification of our precious sanctuary. And the phytoplankton that provide 70% of the world's oxygen worldwide, they've now found that their shells are thinning. And they're thinning because of the acidification, the CO2. They can't, the oceans can't absorb any more CO2. And this is happening in our area, and our politicians just aren't aware of it, and they just don't study the problem, and they bypass it. And you, as coastal commissioners, are going to have to really start fighting very, very hard for these wind farms and for asphalt paving and cutting down the trees, because the cutting down of the trees, the trees are the only thing right now that really help in this war against global warming. And we're heating up the Pacific Ocean, and it's bringing on these very severe storms. So you have a lot of work ahead of you, and you've got to be brave, you've got to be strong. And that's going to be very, very hard, but please do it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna. We have two. We weren't able to find on Zoom, but let me just see. We have a couple that say iPhone and whatnot. Sandy Manage and Susan Kirks. If you can raise your hand. Let me try iPhone.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes. Are you Susan Kirks or Sandy Manage?
I'm Sabrina Brennan.
Sabrina Brennan? Oh, no. Sorry, we don't have your sign up, Sabrina.
I submitted the sign up, and I've been corresponding with your executive team email.
Okay, Sabrina, you have, let's just get rolling. Two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Sabrina Brennan with Surf Equity, formerly the Committee for Equity and Women Surfing. For the past decade, we've raised concerns about gender discrimination in professional surf competitions, sharing evidence like permits, photos, and videos that expose organizers complicit in these inequities. Yet, in Southern California, documented instances of gender discrimination have been met with silence. This inaction is especially troubling when contrasted with the commission's 2015 decision at Mavericks, which mandated equal prize money and representation for women and men. Why aren't these standards applied statewide? Why does systemic discrimination against women athletes persist on public beaches from Orange County to San Diego? Consider the 2024 World Surf League Championship Tour. Thirty-six men competed, but only 18 women. A glaring disparity that limits opportunities for women to compete earn sponsorship and qualify for events like the 2028 Olympics in Los Angeles. Like the WSL, sorry, while the WSL headquartered in Southern California plans to expand the women's roster to 24 next year, the men's division remains at 36. Progress is too slow, and true equity requires equal representation, participation, and recognition. Worse, the WSL qualifying events in Southern California run by third-party organizers routinely exclude and underpay women. Annual events like the U.S. Open of Surfing in Huntington Beach and the U.S. Pro Surf Tour are rife with inequities. For example, at this year's San Clemente Pro, women earn just one-third of the prize money awarded to men. And participation opportunities were unequal. Despite these disparities, the WSL sanctions and supports these events, which serve as qualifiers for athletes to earn ranking points, advance in the league, and hopefully eventually qualify for the Olympics.
Appreciate it. Okay, Simone, I think we were done with public comment. Thanks, everybody, for their comments. Bringing it back to staff, or any, or any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question about the comment that was made by Ms. Sandoval, particularly the access issue in Carpenteria. I'm wondering if that's something we're aware of or can potentially look into. Thank you. Yes, I think I'll turn it over to Steve Hudson, who's online, to give a little bit of an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be happy to provide a little bit of background information. So there were two issues raised. She noted, the speaker noted, the bridge and the fence with the signage. In regard to the bridge, I would just note that this is an issue that we have been working with, both the speaker and the applicant. That was, there was a related appeal that was to come before the commission at our last hearing. That was for an exemption issued by the county that authorized the work for the demolition and replacement of the decking of that bridge. We disagreed with that assertion, and we're recommending a substantial issue determination. And the county, before the hearing, rescinded their exemption and agreed that they would work with the applicant to resolve the situation by having the applicant come through the regular coastal development permit process. That would be an appealable coastal permit, and so the speaker would have the opportunity to bring that matter before the commission in the future. And we have been working closely with her, and she is aware of that. In regard to the trail issue, that is a separate matter, but it appears to be within the close vicinity. The county of Santa Barbara, because they have an LCP, do have primary enforcement authority, and they're the lead on that enforcement matter, as you heard. Our enforcement staff is coordinating closely with the county and will continue to do so. We, I don't have details about whose property that is on, but because responsibility rides with the property owner, the comments that I heard seem to center around exactly where that unpermitted signage and fence are located. So that's something that we will follow up with the county on and keep abreast of. But I did want to let you know that our enforcement staff and permitting staff will continue working closely with the county to resolve that issue.
Thank you very much, and really appreciate you guys staying on these matters.
Thank you, Commissioner Mr. Hudson. Commissioner Bocchko and then Aguirre.
Yes, just very briefly. I am totally uneducated as to the situation in Newport and the docking, but what I wanted to point out to the people who are here today, and then would also like us to start thinking about it, is this is a form of housing, and the state is in a desperate need of housing. And it seems sort of counterproductive to me that any city or county would start not allowing people to live on boats when that may be a very viable alternative to people without housing. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Aguirre?
Thank you. I'll preface my comments with thanking again our executive director for sending that letter demanding equity in surfing, including our LGBTQ+ siblings. I do have a question regarding the comments that Ms. Brennan just mentioned. Is that something that we could look into, or would that have to be pursued through the legislature?
So we're aware of many of the issues I think Ms. Brennan mentioned and are looking into it ourselves and looking at further action. So just want to let you know, this is an issue we are well aware of. So there may be opportunities for legislature, but I don't think we're quite there yet. I think we're trying to, you know, but there was, as Ms. Brennan mentioned, there's a lot of issues in sort of equity in how surf contests are done, and we're trying to piece through which ones and how to approach it. So I think we're thinking about all of the options and what we can do through enforcement or through working with local governments as they're permitting some of these contests and just, you know, doing better about educating our local government partners and the surf competitions about what the expectations are. So we're working through what the best options are. I can't tell, we're not ready to present that to you yet, but legislation may be one of those options.
I'd be happy to work with you on that. This is an issue that's very important to me in the sense of the equity and access. And these organizations are multimillion-dollar organizations, and it's pretty unfair that they give such big prizes for male surfers and not for female surfers. So I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you. I definitely welcome that.
Thank you, Commissioner Aguirre. All right, I just have a question about this public dock and the myriad of accessibility challenges there, and would love to hear from you guys how we're addressing these issues.
So the permit for that project was approved six or seven years ago. So I'm not immediately familiar with the details, but there are certainly some valid concerns that were raised and some good ideas about how to address those issues. So that's something we'll need to look into and follow up on.
Much, much appreciated. I heard ADS, AD8 access, no parking, nothing for bike rags, the impediment to fishing, sort of the signage, this seems, the three-hour time limit, the lack of restrooms or kind of any infrastructure. I mean, it's hidden in there, and I think, you know, nobody will ever be able to find that unless we resolve that. So appreciate it. And I, the public has been heard, so please continue to stay engaged. I think we're done with the public comment. I just want to take one quick moment to show our, or extend our gratitude to one of our most precious friends and members of this commission, our ex officio, Kristina Kunkel, who is taking another, a year of, you know, this is, this is a seed that changes every year. But we value you so much, your input, your wisdom, your kindness, you're so much fun. We'll miss you terribly. You know, we'll be hanging out with you, of course, but looking forward to seeing you again, you know, in January of 2020, oh, 2026. But yes, Ms. Commissioner Kunkel, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair Escalante. And I just want to take this opportunity to, you know, I'm not really going anywhere. I'm just going to be doing more things behind the scenes with Controller Cohen. I just won't be sitting up here with you. I wanted to express my gratitude for everybody sitting up here, everybody sitting out there, everybody watching on Zoom. All of you have impacted my life more than you know, probably, just both professionally and personally. I, I, I love all of you. You're just such, such beautiful souls. No, really. And I mean, I look up here, I look at these faces, I mean, I look at this beautiful person next to me, Jen. You're such an inspiring role model, watching you rise up the ranks at the Ocean Protection Council, leading, leading like you do, just such a powerful woman. I am just such a great friend. Paloma, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be really quick. I can't talk about all of you. Paloma, watching your tireless advocacy for the Tijuana River and your community, the people, Justin, don't look at me. Oh, Justin, don't look at me. I just, I can't even, I've had, it's so... We go out sometimes for, you know, and have fun after these events. And you know what Justin loves to talk about is equitable housing and affordable housing. He wants to talk about the issues. That's what he likes to talk about in his time off, and I love you for it. Is Dana, I just, Dana, Dana just gave me the best advice on love the other day. Like, these people are so beautiful. And then for the public, that last hearing that we had in San Francisco, the last day of public comment almost had me in tears. The support that the, that all of you have for everything that we do, for the coast. Gosh, I don't want to, I've had the, it is such a pleasure and opportunity to sit up here and represent. I represented the former Controller, Betty Yee, current Controller, Malia Cohen, both amazing, strong, powerful women, had the opportunity to serve under the legendary Jack Ainsworth and now the legendary Dr. Kate Huckelbridge. And if there's anyone, I mean, the, all of you, Billy and your team, you're amazing. I love you all. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much. And of course, we look forward to seeing you again quickly. So let's, we'll just plow through, you know, we're gonna lose score soon, so we'll just keep going. If anybody needs breaks, just make sure you let somebody know so that we don't lose score in the meantime. So let's keep going through our calendar. I'm in our agenda, consent calendar.
Thank you. So that brings us to item five, the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. We don't have any items agendaized on the consent calendar, so we'll all just move straight to item six, which is for items moved from the regular to the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, there are six items that staff recommends be moved to the consent calendar, and those are combined items nine A, sorry, eight A, nine B, the permit application and consistency certification for a new fiber optic cable extending offshore of Dockweiler Beach in Los Angeles County. Item eleven A, the time extension for a city of Trinidad LCP amendment that includes minor reformatting, housing definitions and uses, and reasonable accommodation procedures. Item twelve A, the CDP application by PG&E for modifications and fencing at a substation in Arcata. Item twelve B, the CDP application by Caltrans for drainage system improvements and maintenance along Highway 101 in Humboldt County. And finally, item thirteen A, the city of Eureka's flood reduction, sea level rise, resiliency project, including enhancement of Palco Marsh. I note that in regard to item eleven A, that this is for a time extension only. The amendments themselves are anticipated to come back to the commission in early 2025. With that, staff is not aware of any opposition to the project's move to the consent calendar, and the applicants are in agreement with staff recommendations. We're therefore recommending that the commission vote and approve this item.
Thank you, Cassidy. I'm gonna just quickly turn it to Commissioner Termall Sanders, who needs to recuse herself.
I need to recuse myself because of a conflict on item six point one.
Six point one is not up yet. This is just item six.
Isn't it on consent?
Six point one is the next item down.
All right, well, I'm ahead of the game.
Perfect. It's a good thing. Commissioner, thank you. Any expertes? Okay, any members of the public which wish to speak? Great. Anybody, anybody want to remove an item? Okay, motion? Oh, sorry, Wilson wanted to move.
Oh.
Yeah.
Due to the preponderance of Humboldt County items, I'd like to move consent. Thank you.
Wilson moves. Bocca seconds. Is there any willingness to do, unwillingness to do unanimous yes vote on this? None? This passes unanimously? Next, Mr. Schwing.
Thank you. So item six point...
This is a six point one item. So now Commissioner Termall Sanders.
Commissioner Termall Sanders recusing herself.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. So this is the executive director's determination that the action taken by the Huntington Beach City Council and accepting the commission's certification of the Magnolia Tank Farm LCP amendment with suggestive modifications, that that action is legally adequate. In July, the commission approved the Magnolia Tank Farm LCP amendment with modifications, and the city of Huntington Beach accepted the modifications in September. They did so with two resolutions, one of which did contain some errors, but those have now been corrected. So the executive directors completed review and determined that all the corrections, with all the corrections, the adoption is legally adequate. And on this matter, we are just reporting that today. There is no particular action the commission needs to take.
Thank you much, Mr. Schwing. Any speakers on this item?
Yes, we have one available for questions and one who wishes to speak.
All right, two minutes. Please call the president.
Okay, so we have Ray Heimstra, he wishes to speak. Please come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ray Heimstra with Orange County Coastkeeper. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on this item. There were actually a number of people that showed up in person and were ready to speak on this yesterday because this is really of great concern to the community still. And glad to see the commission really keeping a close eye on this risky project because there's, the city of Huntington Beach isn't really able to keep track of what's going on. There's current activities on the site right now that the city was unaware of and have been reported. I urge you to read the letter from yesterday from Nancy Buchos on this issue that has some details and photos. And then I was at the, attending the Ascon Toxic Waste Dump, the one right next door, their community town hall, and their own spokesperson said that the remedy that they're pursuing, they don't think it's adequate. But they're required by law to go ahead and accept that because it's a reasonable alternative. Wasn't a good thing to hear from their representative. Then when I brought up the idea of a cap failure, what would happen at that time? Because that cap failures have happened in Orange County in the past. They said, well, you know, when that happens, then the people who, they're just supposed to fix it. So it wasn't like, oh, don't worry, that won't happen, or something like that. It's, it'll deal with it when it happens. So this is just a reminder, this is a risky project. The commission's really going to need to keep an eye on this from a lot of different angles to make sure it turns out the way that it's supposed to and that the public is safe. Because really, this isn't a NIMBY issue. This is a public safety issue that the neighborhood is concerned about. Like I said, I came here today because I know a number of people weren't able to speak yesterday. So thank you for keeping an eye on this and have a good, happy holiday.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I just want to note that the person available for questions is William Shopoff, and he's here in person.
All right, much appreciated. If any response from staff, we're bringing it back to the commission for any questions or comments.
No, just to thank Mr. Heimstra for his comments. I think we agree, this is something we'll be keeping our eye on and working really closely with the city on because we do need their partnership on this. And we'll continue to do so. So just thank you for the comments, and we will be keeping an eye on it.
Thank you, Dr. Huckelbridge. Commissioners, anybody? Commissioner Nora?
I just wanted to emphasize that this is one of those projects that has several special conditions that, you know, just puts a point on the fact that how the commission, in making these tough decisions, is really also obligated to follow up and be, and keep close. And we do appreciate the public bringing information to us that allows us to do that more effectively.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I just want to appreciate the comment that was made and just continue to express my deep concern with this project. And I know that it's going to be monitored very closely, but in the past, we have seen projects where, that are adjacent to or on top of, you know, former superfund sites, brownfield sites, or near areas where the superfund sites have been capped and the caps fail, and then the people who are living near those sites have been exposed to harmful chemicals. And so I just really appreciate the level at which the commission's going to be monitoring this because it was not an easy decision to be made. And, you know, and I really am just continuing to be concerned with the fact that we're going to build this project directly adjacent to in such close proximity to the Ascon site. It's not going to be fully remediated. So thank you all for your concern with this as well. And thank you to the member of the public who came here to continue to express their concern.
Thank you, Commissioner. Not seen anybody else. Thank you, staff, for the report. And then we'll move on to item number seven, our Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency Report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Escalante. So that brings us to item seven, the Deputy Director's Report for Energy, Ocean Resources and Federal Consistency. We have six negative determinations to report this month, along with one de minimis waiver and one immaterial amendment. Last month, we heard concerns from members of the public about providing limited notice for two of the negative determinations we had in the November DDR. So we've included those again this month as an extension of the comment period. I believe those parties have signed up to provide additional comments, but I'm not aware of any concerns on the other items included in the Deputy Director's report today. So following public comment on the negative determinations we're reporting, we're therefore asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waiver or immaterial amendment included in the Deputy Director's report.
Thank you, Cassidy. So then where, do you, anybody has any, Commissioner?
It's Friday morning. Attention span is very short. Get me back, get me back on track.
I believe there are special, there are speakers on this item.
There you go. Speakers on this item. Yes, so we have two speakers on Zoom that wish to speak. Nina Beatty, oh, there we are. Nina Beatty and Leslie Purcell. So Nina, we're gonna promote you to panelist. Please unmute yourself. Nina, if you're gonna mute yourself? Okay, we're gonna just allow these speakers and attendee right now. Nina, can you unmute yourself, please?
All right, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we're gonna go to Leslie. Leslie, can you unmute yourself, please? Leslie? I see you're on as a panelist. Can you unmute?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the hearing today, and I do still have concerns on this issue, particularly in regard to the marine mammals, the whales in particular. And I know there's language about how it could affect them. It's not likely to affect them, but that still doesn't mean that it wouldn't. There's to be monitoring, but the commission staff actually would like National Marine Fisheries personnel who's trained, rather than just the Navy-trained personnel, to be doing the lookout during these tests. So that's one thing that would be more helpful. The speeds could reach higher than ten knots, which has been pretty much determined to be protective of whales, that they can get out of the way if it's ten knots or less. So that's still something to consider. The size of the undersea vehicles, eighty-five feet, is as large as a blue whale. It's huge. And I was just looking six times, they can, each one can be six times for a hundred days, or six, six of them at a hundred days equals six hundred days of testing, which is almost two years. And I guess they would be not deployed all in the same place at the same time, but that's still an awful lot of activity out there. And we have the whales migrating with babies, calves from Baja, and the list of blue, different whales, not just the blue whales, but the list that could be affected is incredible to me. It's blue. Anyway, it's listed in their report. Also, I did not see any background material again.
Sorry, we need to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you. So next is Nina Beatty. If you can, I'm just gonna allow you to talk. Can you please unmute yourself? Nina, go on once. We're not seeing her. We're gonna go ahead and move on.
We're done?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, bringing it back to staff.
Just want to say again, we're reporting negative determinations. Those have already been issued by the executive director. So we'll, we understand Ms. Beatty's comments and thank her for her participation. But I think we've addressed the issues with the Navy and others. And I think that's the negative determination she was commenting on.
Thank you, Dr. Huckelbridge. Commissioners, anybody has any questions or comments about it? Okay, great, moving on.
Our next thing is now seven A.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven A in our monthly update on the Tijuana River pollution crisis. I wanted to let you know that while we have yet to receive a response from IBWC to the commission's November thirteenth letter, we are aware that they have taken several steps over the past month to begin addressing the issues raised in that letter. Most notably, interim repairs to the junction box that regulates flows into the International Treatment Plant were recently completed, and all five of the plant's settling tanks were cleared out and brought back online. Key equipment in the junction box has been inoperable since 2019. So these interim steps and the expected completion of full repairs to the junction box in the coming months are major milestones. As a result of the settling tanks coming back into operation and a return of limited flow control through the junction box, the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board has identified that the treatment plant has achieved significant reductions in the number of days with compliance issues. This provides some optimism that the plant will achieve compliance with average monthly effluent treatment limits for November and December once the monitoring data is fully reviewed. Because the plant's compliance with its Clean Water Act permit is key to achieving consistency with California's coastal management plan as well, we'll continue to track this through coordination with the water board. Several other issues that we've discussed during the past couple of months remain very concerning, however. These include the continued dry weather flows of wastewater in the Tijuana River and the serious risk posed by uncontrolled sediment. There has been a reduction or absence of dry weather wastewater flows in recent months during daylight hours, but between 4:00 PM and 4:00 AM, flows return and can exceed fifteen million gallons based on IBWC monitoring. The source of these overnight flows has been under investigation by both the U.S. and Mexico sections of the IBWC, and findings are expected by the end of the year. We're very hopeful that these investigations will result in some resolution to these dry weather flows. This is a key emerging issue, as the last three years have seen a ten million gallon per day increase in these dry weather river flows. Because the river typically only flows during rainfall events, flows during dry weather are purely sewage and wastewater and desperately need to be addressed. Regarding uncontrolled sediment, this is a major risk because large volumes of sediment coming from cross-border construction projects without adequate erosion controls can overwhelm pump stations and wastewater collection and treatment systems in both the U.S. and Mexico. For example, the Hollister Pump Station and the settling tanks at the International Wastewater Treatment Plant have only just recovered from damage caused by sediment flows last winter and during Hurricane Hillary in August of 2023. Water board staff informed me this week that this issue has been elevated to governor Newsom's attention and that he recently directed Cal EPA to send a letter to counterparts in Baja, California, to pursue it further. While construction of additional sediment basins may help, unless those are appropriately scaled and regularly maintained and cleared, they can easily be overwhelmed. Moving forward, further coordination... Moving forward, further coordination with Cal EPA on this issue may be valuable in terms of identifying other possible solutions the commission could contribute to, including expedited permitting for additional sediment basins and preventive maintenance activities, as well as informational resources for Mexico regarding erosion control BMPs that can be integrated into ongoing and future construction projects to limit sediment volumes released during rainfall events. As you all well know, our agency has experience identifying such measures and integrating them into our regulatory actions. Mexico may benefit from some of our experience in this area, and we're ready and willing to provide it. Shifting gears somewhat, I also wanted to make note of some recent and upcoming positive developments regarding waterborne debris and air quality. The first is that a demonstration project involving a trash collection boom within the main channel of the Tijuana River has recently begun, and will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony next week. The project was funded by Senate Bill 170 through the State Water Board. And in addition to removing trash from the river this winter, it's expected to gather information leading to the design and installation of a permanent trash control structure. This is a significant positive development, as trash moving through that water course continues to be a major source of marine debris and trash throughout the Tijuana River Valley. The second effort is won by the City of San Diego, that's expected to improve air quality within a portion of the river valley by addressing the 15-foot elevation drop at the Saturn Avenue River Crossing. This drop causes polluted wastewater and sewage to be aerosolized, resulting in degraded air quality and public health risks. The city's implementation of a mitigation plan in coming months is expected to provide some benefits to this area by reducing the source of air pollution. I also wanted to follow up on a couple of the items discussed during last month's update. The first is that in response to an October 24 petition from local elected officials, the U.S. EPA has begun evaluating the Lower Tijuana River Valley for eligibility as a superfund site. This process will likely take some time, but may help facilitate additional federal resources that can be used for the cleanup of hazardous materials and protection of public and environmental health in this area. Second, two of the public health surveys we reported on last month have now been completed. These were carried out by the County of San Diego, Centers for Disease Control, and the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry. Results from these surveys are expected early next year. San Diego State University School of Public Health is also carrying out a longer-term survey for its Healthy Water, Healthy Air Study in order to help identify health issues linked to environmental conditions in the River Valley. This survey will be ongoing through October of 2025. Additional information on this survey and a wide range of other updates can be found in the Executive Officers' Report presented to the San Diego Regional Water Quality Control Board earlier this week and posted to the regional board's website. I'd encourage you to refer to that resource for additional details and information. Finally, I wanted to note that two sources of additional funding may be coming online in the coming year that could be helpful. $50 million was approved by voters through Proposition 4 for grants to address border river pollution, and $310 million was requested by President Biden last month in the administration's disaster relief funding package. While authorization and allocation of the disaster relief funding is pending, plans for rollout of the Prop 4 grant funding in fiscal year 25, 26 are currently under discussion with the state board and Cal EPA. That concludes my update for this month, and I'll stand by for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tofel. That was a very great report. Any, any public comments?
No.
Great. Bringing it back to the commission, Commissioner Aguirre wanted to make some comments?
Yeah, very briefly. Thank you, Director Tofel, for the story report. You obviously have the latest, because I was going to share the information from the City of San Diego and them placing the RIPRAP to mitigate the aerosolization of the river flow there. So that's, very grateful to the City of San Diego for that effort. And as he mentioned, the CDC CASPER results from that survey will be shared in January, and the Assessment for Chemical Exposure Health Survey will be shared in February. And I'll just add that the SESU Health, ongoing health survey, we do have preliminary results on that one. They have found a positive association between odor reports and upper respiratory infections, headaches, diarrhea, trouble sleeping, and appetite loss. And I'll just close with encouraging the State Water Board and Cal EPA to dedicate that funding for diversion and treatment of the river. So for what we need, desperately need, increased infrastructure and resources for that, more than anything else. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Aguirre. And as always, enormous gratitude for all your work and your leadership on this. Any other comments or questions from commissioners on this item?
Well, just great to see that Prop 4 is going to bring resources. And thank you to President Biden for doubling the money that is going to be available.
Here, here. All right. Wonderful. Well, appreciate all those news I'm looking for.
And I think we should thank Governor Newsom, who actually was the one who went and lobbied for that extra money when he was in Washington earlier this summer. So I want to give him some credit for jumping in on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Definitely.
Appreciate it. Yes, please extend our word of gratitude for that. And I think with that, we'll move on from this item. We're going to 7B, the Negative Determination, San Mateo County. Staff?
Thank you. As you noted, this brings us to 7B, the Negative Determination for the U.S. Space Force for Installation of a New Radar Dome at Its Pillar Point Station. Our environmental scientist, Dr. Jules Kelly, has a brief presentation for you on this item. But before she begins, I wanted to first quickly walk you through our review process for it. While, as you know, negative determinations are typically reviewed and responded to by the executive director, excuse me, and then reported to you each month, occasionally we receive one that we think may benefit from additional public and commission input. Those we bring forward is unsigned response letters from the executive director and solicit input from the commission before finalizing. As you'll hear from the presentation, while we haven't identified significant coastal act consistency issues with the current project, because it involves changes to such a highly visible and prominent location, and is likely to generate some interest from the public, we wanted to use this enhanced review process and see if the commission had feedback for the executive director to consider before proceeding. With that, I'd like to invite Dr. Kelly to begin her presentation.
Good morning, commissioners. This is item 7B. The Department of the Air Force, U.S. Space Force, has submitted a negative determination for the installation and operation of a new telemetry antenna at the Pillar Point Space Force Station, north of Half Moon Bay in San Mateo County. We're presenting it to you today to provide an opportunity for you to share input with us on the project before we respond. Next slide, please. Although it's all the way up in Half Moon Bay, the Pillar Point Station is used to track space and missile launches originating from Vandenberg, approximately 220 miles to the south. Next slide, please. The United States military has been using the Pillar Point site since 1940, and from 1969 until 1997, the site contained an 80-foot diameter telemetry antenna. When this dish became unusable due to corrosion, commission staff concurred with a negative determination by the Air Force for its removal. Next slide, please. Then, in 2006, the commission concurred with a consistency determination by the Air Force for installation of a smaller telemetry antenna enclosed by a 62-foot diameter radome, standing at 135 feet tall. The commission raised concerns about impacts to public views, but ultimately found that the new antenna was consistent with the scenic and visual resources policy of the Coastal Act, Section 30251. Because the facility was necessary for Air Force tracking functions, there was no feasible less damaging location, design, or technology that could be used, and because the Air Force committed to visual mitigation in the form of landscaping to screen several structures from public views. Next slide, please. In 2008, the commission concurred with a second consistency determination for two new command transmit antennas, shown here, and one new 76-foot-tall telemetry antenna that was never constructed. The commission again raised similar view protection concerns and included a condition requiring removal of the proposed antenna structures when they were no longer operationally functional. Next slide, please. The Air Force is now proposing to install a new antenna that would be 64 feet tall, enclosed with a 62-foot diameter radome, to protect the system from adverse environmental conditions. The antenna would be sighted east of an existing similar structure, and in keeping with the 2008 concurrence, the Air Force will also remove an existing 90-foot-tall telemetry dish, once the new antenna is fully operational. The Air Force has determined that the installation of the new antenna and removal of an old one would not adversely affect coastal views. Next slide, please. To aid in our analysis of that determination, the Air Force and commission staff prepared some visual simulations of the project site from public vantage points. First, I'll show the current view, and then the simulated view from four different coastal locations. Here is the current view from the north side of Pillar Point Harbor. Next slide, please. And here is the simulated view from the north side of Pillar Point Harbor. Next slide, please. Here is the current view from a public trail north of the site, looking back towards Ross's Cove. Next slide, please. And here's the simulated view with the new antenna. Next slide, please. Here is the current view from Surfers Beach. Next slide, please. And here's the simulated view with the new antenna. Next slide, please. And lastly, here is another view from Pillar Point Harbor. Next slide, please. And this is the simulated view with the new antenna. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Oops, back one. Oh, you were on the right one. Sorry. Although the proposed project raises similar concerns as previous projects at Pillar Point, the proposed antenna would be consistent with the existing visual character of the Bluff Top, which already has one large antenna radome and two smaller ones, plus two other dish antennae and other buildings. The height of the new antenna would also be less than half that of the tallest antenna, and would be sighted at a slightly lower elevation than the existing large one. So it would not be as conspicuous, and would have less of a visual impact on the coastline. Nonetheless, commission staff requested additional commitments to further minimize the visual effect, including painting the radome a less visible color and a vegetation screening plan to further shield the station from public vantage points. While the radome must remain white to reflect light and keep the antenna cool, the Air Force has committed to developing a vegetation screening plan for review by the executive director, including new plantings of appropriate non-invasive native vegetation focused on screening the radomes and buildings that are most visible in public views. Additionally, the Air Force's commitment to remove an existing 90-foot-tall dish would improve the site's visual quality and ensure no net increase in the total number of antennae at the site. Next slide, please. Under the federal consistency regulations, a negative determination can be submitted for a federal agency activity that has no coastal effects, or which is the same as or similar to activities for which a consistency determination has been concurred with in the past. As discussed, the commission has concurred with multiple consistency determinations for similar projects at the Pillar Point Space Force Station. For this antenna project, the Air Force would take a similar approach and minimize visual impacts to the extent feasible, through decommissioning of defunct equipment and a supplemental vegetation screening plan. Commission staff therefore tentatively agree with the Air Force that the project is the same as or similar to previously concurred with antenna projects, and that it would not adversely affect coastal zone resources. However, before providing a formal response to the Air Force and given the high visibility and profile of the project, we felt it would be appropriate to seek feedback from the commission and the public. This feedback will then inform the executive director's decision. If the executive director objects to the negative determination, we would request that the Air Force submit a consistency determination that would be brought before you at a future meeting. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions. I also wanted to mention, though, that last night we received the public comment letter sent to commissioners, which raised concerns about the outdoor lighting at Pillar Point Station. The comment letter notes that excessive night lighting, especially short wavelength blue lighting, interferes with animals foraging at night and can increase susceptibility to predation. The commenter recommends the use of warmer LED lighting that is more targeted and reduces glare, rather than blue lighting, and requests that the lighting comply with Dark Sky International's guidelines. We were able to coordinate with Space Force staff this morning on this issue, and they acknowledged the concerns raised and plan to work on the facility's lighting plan to ensure light spillover is reduced, and the minimum lighting necessary for security and operations is used. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any public comments?
Yes, we have a total of six. Three are available for questions, all from Space Force. And then we have the other three that are on Zoom. That would be Dan Hagerty, Kimberly Williams, and Nina Beatty.
Okay, we're going to unfortunately hit quorum challenges at 11:30. So what's the shortest second, one minute?
You said at 11:30?
Yeah, 11:30.
We'll be fine.
Okay. So two minutes, okay?
Yes.
All right. So two minutes for the three speakers, please. Go ahead. Let's get through them quickly.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and do Dan Hagerty. You're allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Dan, you can unmute by dialing star six.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Yes, I just wanted to echo with concerns about the lighting and the dark sky compliance and just general, general rules. These, you know, I've been here, I'm sorry, Dan Hagerty from El Granada, I've been here 35 years. And the situation now with the lighting, and I don't know if there's any added lighting on this new radome, new antenna, but the existing lighting scheme is, is, it's significantly a problem. The bright, blue-rich lighting, you know, going out to the ocean, if you're, if you're in the area and you set off a motion sensor near the road, it's just obnoxiously bright. And many, many are really trying to do their best to improve lighting situations and make them to, to light what's needed, but not, not anything more. And, and to not be, you know, there's a lot of health issues involved with this, blue-rich, blue-rich LEDs, a lot of, all of it's documented, darksky.org. Anyway, so it sounds like somebody's got some attention on this, and appreciate that. And I think that's all for now. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Next is Kimberly Williams. Kimberly, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Escalante and commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Kelly. My name is Kimberly Williams. I'm a local resident of the mid-coast. I'm concerned that this draft negative determination doesn't include a review of the impacts of outdoor lighting at the Pillar Point Air Force Station, which are significant, as Dan mentioned. New lights were installed around the perimeter several years ago, and more lighting seems to have been added recently that is excessively bright and shines off property. and more lighting seems to have been added recently that is excessively bright and shines off property, adding significant light pollution to the area, and it impacts views of the night sky, both on the land and in the water. The lighting is reflected in the harbor. It illuminates the ocean, and it shines well past the perimeter of the station, add-on to the bluff, and can be seen from Highway 1. The impacts of excessively bright lighting generally has been a subject of complaints in the midcoast over the last couple of years, and as a result, the local community council has recommended the county adopt a lighting ordinance for the midcoast. The lighting pollution impacts bird migration, roosting and nesting activities, and the ability of some bird species to hunt at night, such as short-eared owls and great horned owls. Artificial lights filling onto the water surface disrupts biological processes of marine life, impacting their ability to find food, making them more susceptible to predators, and disrupting normal cycles that are based on sunlight or the absence thereof. It also impacts our ability to see on clear evenings the night sky. For example, we had the opportunity to see the comet Suits and Sean Atlas earlier this year, which was viewable from the bluffs over the ocean some nights, and this was limited by the ambient light from the Air Force facility. Moonlight paddles in the harbor are further diminished by the light pollution, and it interferes with bioluminescence. The staff noted in the report the daytime view is substantial impacting from all sides and vantage points, landward and seaward, and the community and visitors to the coast unfortunately not in view. But the impact of the lighting at night is something that can be substantially mitigated for and should be.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I'm sorry, I have two minutes, but
We've got to move on to the next speaker.
That's it, no more. Nina Beatty's not available. We can't find her.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So bringing it back to staff, any responses?
Yeah, just very briefly, Vice Chair, we appreciate the public comments and bringing this to our attention, this issue with the lighting. As Dr. Kelly noted, we followed up with, had a chance to follow up with Space Force staff this morning on that. We're confident that they'll take a close look at the lighting plan and pursue just the necessary lighting for security. Obviously, it's an Air Force installation, so it needs security lighting. But that doesn't mean that improvements can't be made to the existing condition. We're confident that they will be pursuing that.
Thank you, Mr. Tofel. Dr. Huckerbridge?
I just wanted to add that, as you all are well aware, this is sort of an issue that has come before the commission a couple times now, the night lighting. I think Commissioner Wilson has raised it several times. So I just wanted to thank the public for raising it. And at this particular instance, it's something we need to be focused on and just appreciate that the Air Force has been willing to work with us on this because I do think the impacts are significant. We need to be thinking through how to do this. That's not before us today in this negative determination, but I appreciate their willingness to work with us. And we're gonna be paying close attention to these issues as they come up more and more, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Huckerbridge. Bringing it back to the commission, any questions or comments, Commissioner Nada?
I do have a question about how the federal consistency process, determination process, deals with cumulative impacts. Because as you can see, this is a kind of a textbook case of one begets another, begets other, and with this technology, I think we're seeing the rapid expansion of this. So how, is there a way specifically that the consistency determination process deals with cumulative impacts?
I'll let Cassidy answer a little more specifically. I guess I'll just kick it off by saying, I mean, I think the federal consistency process gives us a lot of flexibility in how we work with the federal agencies, especially with CDs, to address those types of impacts. So as, you know, as was explained earlier, we have done prior CDs, consistency determinations for these types of activities, and here we went to a negative determination, which is allowed under the regs. We could, if we were concerned about cumulative effects and felt like we needed to take a more, you know, take a different look, we could request a CD from the federal agency in that case. So I think, and look at cumulative effects as part of that. So I don't, there's no reason we couldn't, you know, look at those under a CD of any kind in the future. Cassidy, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Kate. Yeah, just expanding on that a little bit more on this specific project. As Dr. Kelly noted in her presentation, the commission reviewed previously consistency determinations at this site for installations, and the arrangement made was installation of new equipment comes hand in hand with removal of equipment that's no longer necessary, and that's integral to this project as well. There will be one of those large radar dishes that will be removed. And so that was really a key part of our consideration of this with an eye towards accumulative effects, that it's
So the no net increase, I understood.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cummings?
I just wanted to thank you all for your work with the Space Force and your ongoing efforts to try to minimize and mitigate the impacts on coastal watershed or coastal views, and really trying to do our best at kind of minimizing those impacts. And, you know, we understand that this type of technology is necessary for a variety of safety issues. But, you know, doing the best we can and kind of incorporate this new development into the, you know, these coastal areas with minimizing the impacts is really critical. So just want to thank you all for your work on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Nobody else wants to? Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, everybody, for your good work, and especially this collaboration with the applicants and the input from the public, always, as always, of immense value to us. So, and we love dark skies, so the best, it's so important for our mental health as well as our physical health and our environment. So with this, anybody who has a motion?
We don't need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion for this. Sorry.
We can move on to item 10, I think.
Moving on. Thank you so much.
Yes, so item 10 is the North Coast Deputy Director's Report. I will actually be giving this report this morning. Shannon Gray couldn't join us. She had a family issue she needed to attend to. So item 10 includes five waivers and two permit amendments for minor developments in the city of Eureka and Humboldt and Mendocino Counties. Staff is not aware of any opposition on these matters, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to this item.
Thank you. Any speakers on this item?
No speakers.
No speakers. Do three or more commissioners object to any items on this DDR report? Seeing none, the commission concurs that there's no objection to any item. And that is the end of our agenda.
The agenda.
Yes, that is it. Our last meeting. Happy holidays, everybody. Whatever you celebrate, I hope it's wonderful, joyful, a lot of rest, getting ready for a new year of a lot of work protecting this environment and everyone. So enormous thanks, and congrats to our new officers. I hand over the gavel.
Madam Chair, I just want to welcome all of you to Long Beach in February.
Looking forward to that. Yes, Long Beach.